This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
So seeing the presence of a quorum of the Regional School Committee, I'm calling to order this meeting at 6:02 PM. And we'll take roll call attendance. Please state present when I call your name. Mr. Demling?
Demling, present.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, present.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, present.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, present.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, present.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, present.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, present.
And McDonald, present. So we are in session. And I will turn it over to Ms. Cunningham for facilitation.
Well, thank you. Welcome, everyone. First, I'd like to thank both the E-School Committee and the APEA Exec Board for taking the time to start this conversation. This is a very public opportunity, and hopefully this is the first of many discussions that we'll be able to have. One of the things I want to say for this evening is that I'm facilitating the beginning of a conversation, right? What I'm doing is not considered a restorative circle. So this is by no means doing justice to any of the restorative circles that you have seen done. It was a very quick opportunity for me to be asked to facilitate this meeting, and I thank you all for having that trust in having me facilitate. So thank you there, but I also want people to know that this is not a circle by no means as how circles are usually conducted. So the agenda item was listed as a discussion about, let me say it directly, meeting the educational needs of our students during the pandemic and how we can safely get students and staff into the building. So that's my understanding of what this whole conversation is going to be about. And as this discussion unfolds, there are there may not be any closure, there may not be any solutions that will take place tomorrow, or answers to some of the pressing questions that we're hoping would be answered. So once again, it's just the start of a conversation. And finally, for the School Committee and the Exec Board, I just want you to know that although I have upgraded my grid system here, that I can't really see everyone, so please don't take it personally if your hand is raised and I don't call on you. I have asked Dr. Morris to assist me in seeing who they have their hands up that I haven't recognized so that he can let me know whose hands are raised. Okay. So with that being said, as with most meetings, there are norms. So I want to get through the norms before we get started. These norms are simply saying that we're going to respect each other, right? We're going to respect the conversation, we're going to respect the purpose of us getting together. And your staying on this call means that you are willing to abide by the norm, okay? So the first norm is, one person at a time will speak, like we normally hear, and that you're going to use I-statements if you're talking about how you are feeling. If you are talking on behalf of your organization, then you will use the we-statement. Another is that we're going to assume positive intentions, we're going to focus on solution, we're going to listen in order to understand, not listen to respond, but listen to understand each other's point of view. We're also going to accept and expect non-closure. So those are the six norms that I have written out here. And like I mentioned, your staying on this call means that you are willing and ready to abide by those norms. So to begin, I only wrote down three prompts, so three pressing questions that we will have, and each side will have an opportunity to speak. So each member of each group will have an opportunity to speak, and then the other group will have an opportunity to speak to the same sound. So that's how we're going to work it. The first prompt, this basically begins, because I know that this has been very public, there's been a lot of information in the news, and people in the community and our staff and our families need to know the responsibilities that both sides have when it comes to making decisions, right? You all have this heavy responsibility when you're making your decisions. And I want each side to be able to talk about the points, the parameters, and the responsibilities you each have when you are making the decisions that you are making. So with that, we'll start with the APEA Exec Board. And as I mentioned, we'll go through that board for anyone who'd like to speak, and then once they are finished, then we will have the School Committee respond.
Okay. Thank you, Doreen. I'll go ahead and I'll start first. And I prepared a statement, but it basically answers that prompt. So my name is Lamico McGee, and I am the Acting President for the APA at this time. We are committed to democratic process in the APA. We follow the lead of our Representative Council and membership. Our next Representative Council meeting, which we inform the School Committee, is Monday. And at that time, we'll review the data of a member survey and bring the issue and possible options to our Representative Council for discussion. We followed a democratic process in gathering input from membership during the negotiation of the MOA, which over 100 members volunteered their time over the summer to work on various committees. We also facilitated conversations with families. Over the past few months, many statements in the media have been made about educators questioning our dedication to students and the community. We are the community too, we are parents too, and we're committed to students in our profession. Educators have worked tirelessly to serve our students remotely and in their homes during this pandemic, while managing our own households and challenges. We know that the School Committee Superintendent Assistant Superintendent face some of these same challenges in their dedication to students and community. We believe it's critical for us to work together, communicate respectfully and efficiently with each other for the benefit of our students and our families and our community. So I thank you for allowing this opportunity for us to be able to initiate this communication. And hopefully, what this leads to is for us to have a common understanding of what we need to do to serve our community, our students, and our families. Thank you.
This is an open opportunity right now for anyone from the APEA Executive Board to be able to speak.
Hi, sure. So I'm Tiffany Tibido. I am the Unit A Co-Chair for the Secondary Educators. And I guess I just want to add, along with what Mika has shared as our president, is that our role as the Amherst Pelham Education Association is to advocate for the working conditions of our educators in the units A, B, and C. So that includes our teachers, nursing staff, counseling staff, parent professionals, and clerical staff.
This is still an open opportunity for APEA Exec Board members to speak.
It might be helpful, could you rephrase or restate, not rephrase, the question or the prompt?
Well, basically, I was saying that there are responsibilities that you share or parameters that you look at when you are making the decisions that you make. What I believe I've heard Tiffany Tibido mention is that your job is to advocate on behalf of the working condition of teachers. But I believe Ms. McGee to have stated was that you go to your rep council and your membership and you survey them and you bring back information based on what they have mentioned. And so the question is, just to continue to state how you make your decisions when you are making the decisions. Because I know many in the community want to know how you base your decision or what's your decision-making process.
I will add a little bit. I'm not good at speaking on the ad lib, and I had a prepared statement which really doesn't fit here, but I'm going to try. And just say that everything, you know, of course, what Mika and Tiffany said is what we're about. We, at the same time, regularly acknowledge that as educators, our purpose is educating children and our working conditions are their learning conditions, as teachers often say. And that's something that we factor in when we're considering our responsibilities and so on.
Thank you. Once again, I know that there are a few more board members. You have an opportunity if you'd like to speak.
Hello, everybody. My name is Margaret Todd, or Ms. Maggie. And I am a kindergarten para at Wildwood. And I prepared a small statement, and I just wanted to read it here because I had to write it down because otherwise I get all. So I just wanted to address something that happened a little while ago, and it's been kind of weighing heavy on my heart. And I just wanted to say that as educators, we eat, sleep, and breathe better for our community and our students. And as APA members, we eat, sleep, and breathe better for our community, students, and our coworkers. And last month, there was a letter sent to the staff across the district. And along with those letters, many of the staff, including myself, received other emails from families telling staff that they must attend union meetings and vote in their favor. And these families are families that I hold very dear to my heart. Some of the families are families I know personally. I just feel like this is a huge violation of boundaries, and it puts a strain on the relationships that educators strive so hard to make with their families and their students. The School Committee and admin really missed the opportunity to stand up for educators that teach the children in this community. And it is as if we are not viewed as members of the same community, but as other. And in the spirit of restoration, I would like to propose that during future negotiations between APA, School Committee, that we should put out a formal statement to the district and its families expressing the norms of the process. Just as we have to follow norms during discussions on video or through email, families should be held to the same standards. And just one last thing, I would like to say that our families are the third leg of our tripod. And just as staff have an outlet for families, I mean, just as staff have an outlet, like the APA, families should as well, so that the communication can be respectful and within the boundaries.
Well, thank you for sharing that. What I do want to just remind us is that we are the APEA Exec Board and the School Committee that are having this conversation. And so I want to keep it to the things that the APEA and the School Committee have done and are working on to combine and come together. I understand the letter had a big impact, but right now, we don't have families on this call to have the families speak as to how they're processed or they're thinking as to why they wrote the letter or the rationale for the letter. So I want to just make sure that we're keeping it with APEA and School Committee. So once again, we do have a few APEA Exec Board members here who I'd like them to, if you so choose, to have an opportunity to speak.
This is in regards to the first question, so I think, I'm not sure if there's anyone else on the board that has a response to that first question.
Right, so we will transition now to the School Committee. And we'll ask the same question, may sound a little different, but it's the same. Just your decision-making process, what goes into the parameters when you are making the decisions that you make?
I can speak first, and I'm Allison McDonald. And I'm actually speaking on my own, not on the behalf of the committee. Everybody else from the committee is here and can speak their own perspective. I, for those, we skipped over introduction, so I'll just, by way of introduction, I'm an Amherst resident of 18-ish years and have two kids in the district that have come through Fort River and now in the middle school and the high school. I think, not sure, sort of the best way or most succinct way, and unlike others that have well-prepared statements and comments, I don't. So I'm a little bit off the cuff, so forgive me. I see our role as School Committee as really representing not just the voice of the community, but also keeping all of the needs of all of the stakeholders in the school district in mind as we work through and make our decisions. And our decisions are limited in scope. We don't have, I know that the community sometimes thinks that we have a lot more authority and scope of power, if you will, than we in fact do. So, but I think, you know, when we are making those decisions that are in the purview with the School Committee, at least as I go about it, I'm trying my best to keep the needs, the desires, and the educational mission of all of our stakeholders in mind. And but first and foremost, really, our students that we are serving because that is core to our mission of our school district. The families and their lives and the challenges that they face, particularly in a pandemic like now, are critical in making those decisions, as are the needs and challenges that our educators and staff that work in the district. Because all of those pieces work together to fulfill that mission, which is with our students at the heart of that mission. So at least when I'm going through and looking at sort of the choices, the difficult choices and difficult planning that we've had to do over the last year and will have to continue to do in the coming year, I first, I think first about what our students need and then our families and our community and I mean the full community of stakeholders in order to serve those students. And I will, as we all know that are on this call, it is exceptionally challenging and difficult when it feels in a situation like now in a pandemic that a choice that might be beneficial or helpful for me or student A or family B may feel like it's taking something away from somebody else. And that is just a really, really difficult position for any of us to have to be in to feel like to serve one, we are taking something away or constraining somebody else. So that doesn't answer that question about making decisions, but I think might put some context in there that we as volunteers in the community have been put and forced into this situation of having to make very, very difficult decisions and trade-offs within the scope. So I'm sorry, I've babble on for too long, so thank you.
Fine, thank you. The floor is open to School Committee members. So if you are a School Committee member, if you would like to speak, please do so and introduce yourself.
Doreen, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm only speaking because I think someone just joined by phone, and I want to make sure that person has the opportunity to identify themselves and participate if they choose to. So if it's okay, Doreen, I know you might not have been able to see that, that's why, only reason I jumped in. But it looks like it may be Hala who's using her phone as well as the screen. So I think she's already identified herself or can do so. I'm sorry, that's the only reason I jumped in, and I'm going to jump right back out.
Thank you. Ms. Lord, were you going to speak?
You're muted, Heather.
Okay, I had called in because it wasn't working. My computer keeps freezing, but I'm just going to try to talk, and if I freeze, I apologize, I hung up. In terms of when I make a decision, the points of the parameters, up until even in September, I was in the halls as an educator. So I come from years of education. I, my scaffolding is I think about the students first and foremost, and then I wrap around their families, and then the educators, if I'm doing a ladder, and then the Administration and School Committee and DESI and up and up. So I think, like, I prioritize the students, so if it's a concentric circle, sorry, I didn't have, you know, I do the circles, and my primary, because all of us, we are all important to this life of the student and our families and the community. But I start with that. I try to get, hear as many voices. A lot of voices don't participate in surveys, and so how can we be in the community visible? It's been tricky during a pandemic, so I can't just sit in, you know, a complex and say, "Hey, come meet me these two hours, I'll be here, let's chat." We did do that a little in the summer with masks and distance, but, um, so it's been tricky and challenging, but I try to hear as many voices as I can. I also do factor in like different articles, science, as much as I, like, I, oh, wait, maybe I'm getting off the... I just try to get as much information as I can, have it all spread out. Sometimes I put it on Post-it notes on the wall because my mind has a lot going on, and really sit with it. And I don't do it in my best interest, I do it in what the voices of what I hear is needed most with the science and the other considerations. Sorry, that was really clumsy, but that's part of how I make my decisions. And, I mean, oh, no, yeah, in a big way. Thank you.
Thank you. The opportunity is still open for School Committee members.
Yep, I'll go ahead. So I'm Ben Harrington. Some of you folks have been my coworkers in the past, but so I'm currently the Assistant Facility Director for Amherst Public Schools. I've also served as a custodian at Wildwood and Fort River, et cetera, et cetera. So I'll just jump right into my decision-making process. Those of you that know me know that I'm a communicator, AKA a talker. So I try to suss things out as best as I can, you know, when it comes to issues. I try to bounce things off of as many different people as humanly possible. I also take in a lot of the emails we get here. I think some of you folks probably get similar emails. And I try to do my best to kind of take the personal out of it and just balance it. Realistically, I don't know if this sounds crazy, but the key part of my decision-making process is to try to look forward as far as possible to see how the decisions I make right now are going to affect other people in the long term, right? I'll be all right, I'm, you know, somewhat of a survivor, I guess, but I'm mostly concerned with how, like, the impact of what it is that we do here. And, I mean, this is the most important work we can be doing, right? All of us, everyone who's here. So just keeping it short and sweet here.
Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for being here tonight. It's really nice to get faces to go with everybody's names. My name's Carrie Spitzer, and I grew up in Amherst, graduated from Amherst High School a long time ago. But I currently have three kids, one of them's in the district right now and two will be shortly. So I'm also a researcher. I really love, you know, studying problems and coming up with optimal solutions. You know, that's what I was, you know, I've studied public policy. And the thing that's been really, really hard this year is that there are no optimal solutions. And I think, you know, often what I've leaned on, you know, is, you know, finding, you know, the expert opinion or the journal, you know, just to come to an optimal decision. And I think that's been really hard this year, and so I just want to recognize that. I think all of us have been struggling to make choices that we've never, in a million years, thought we'd be faced with this year, and it's been really hard. So when I am, you know, when I, because I can't just lean on that research, you know, piece, I've tried to, you know, I've read every single email that's come in, listened to all the public comment when we get it. And I do say, you know, I think I, there are limits, and, you know, I'm super busy with work and three kids, so I, you know, haven't been responding to all the emails at any, you know, as much as I would have liked. I haven't been able to get out and talk to folks because we're in a pandemic. So, you know, this feels like I wish we were face-to-face, but, and that's been a lot of what's been happening this year. I think that's made it harder, so I think one of the things that I really like to do is talk face-to-face with people, and it's made it really hard. So this is not optimal, but I'm really glad it started, and I just want to thank everybody, and that's it.
Go ahead. Peter?
Hi, I'm Peter Demling, resident of Amherst. I have three kids through the Amherst Regional Public Schools, one currently on almost every building. So in terms of the responsibility part of the question, with almost every topic I approach on School Committee, I start from this, my own personal synthesis of what our mission is, which is equal access to the highest quality education for all students. And there's a lot packed in there, but the things that really drive me a lot and that are driving me on this particular, how do we get kids back in the building issue, is equal access and all students. So, you know, by all students, it's not just 95% of students, it's every student, every type of student, especially those who are the most vulnerable and who might not have the strongest advocates. So as my role on, as the representative to CPAC, our Specialized Parent Advisory Council, I hear a lot of those stories directly, and that's pretty intense to absorb and to then try and integrate into how that should affect our decisions. You know, which gets to the parameters part of the question. You know, we talked really early on when we first started planning about this tension point. And I think Ms. McDonald and Mr. Harrington just touched on this a little bit about, you know, that there's never going to be a perfect solution. And, you know, we have a non-zero health risk on the one hand during an active pandemic. And we also have a non-zero educational cost and personal cost, and, you know, to students and families. And, you know, we did the best we could, and I think, I think all parties, you know, acted in good faith, and we got the best we could at the time. And now we know a lot more, right, about both the health risk and the educational cost. And in terms of the parameters, the things that are driving how I think about this is the opinions of medical professionals about how about how we manage safety and how we create safe environments and the educational cost. And we've heard the, the School Committee heard quite a bit about the educational cost from parents directly in public input, and, you know, anecdotal story after anecdotal story about the impact to their children. And, you know, without putting a quantifiable percent or number on it, a lot of students are struggling, and a lot of families are struggling. And our survey data shows disproportionately affected students of color. Survey data, we know that low-income families are being disproportionately affected. We know that students with IPs, and so it only makes the problem more challenging. And that, so that is what's driving the urgency, you know? I think, and to do it in a safe way, because at the end of the day, I, you know, we can't have amazing schools without amazing teachers. And I believe personally that the reason why Amherst Regional Public Schools are the best schools in the region is because we have amazing teachers and because we support our teachers who support our students. And so, you know, we have to, we have to drive towards finding that balance in an urgent manner. That's, that's, that's how I land on it imperfectly and without closure, as Ms. Cunningham identified at the beginning. Thank you.
The floor is still open for School Committee members. Ms. Stanser?
Thank you. I'm Margaret Stanser. I'm elected to the Pelham School Committee, and as part of Thank you. Um, I'm Margaret Stanser. I'm elected to the Pelham School Committee and as part of that, I am also a member of the Regional School Committee. When I think about making decisions from the school committee. I feel some responsibility to the community that elected me, so I will listen to the input from the community. We have direct contact, direct contact with, in the case of Pelham, with the superintendent and the principal. Occasionally, maybe from a a teacher, but not usually. I'm retired, so I've had children go through the system, but I don't have direct contact right now because I don't have children or. In the system and I. This has been a really difficult time. As everybody has said, there, when you take in all of the input. There's no good solution for everybody. So it's been really challenging. And, um, I try my best to. Hear all of the pieces. So I would also just like to say I appreciate the opportunity to actually see teachers. And have this conversation with teachers because that for me hasn't really happened. Thank you.
I see about two other members of the school committee. Like I said, my screen doesn't show everyone, but. If anyone else from the school committee would like to speak, the floor is open.
Yeah, I'll say something. Hi, I'm Bethany Seeger. I am representative from Leverett and I've been on the Leverett School Committee. For a little while now, this is my second term. And in that committee, so most, so I joined the regional committee in June, I believe, so I'm relatively new to it and I'm still really learning sort of the full picture and how everything. And all the groups fit together. So I'll speak more to how I've thought about decisions over the last five years from a leverate point of view. There. I I think about the children in the school. Um, I think about the learning environment and the school community. And and. Trying to do what's best for them, um, for the group at large. You know, I'll be honest too, we think a lot about budget there with the all the towns around here reaching their tax levy ceiling. So there's. There's always that in the budget in Leverett has been challenging in the last four or five years. So there's a lot of that too, but that that to me comes after thinking about the first two categories of children in the school community and what's best for. People involved in the families involved. Um, and this year. It just feels like no decisions we make are easy. There's just no good options. You know, I generally try to find the option that feels the best and it's just been a year of. Not being able to have a best or in many ways a good option and and both. Both, um, in my school committee life as well as my personal life and, you know, just all the choices we. As people have had to make that are just subpar. And I'm appreciative that we're here tonight, all talking together, and I'm just really appreciative of hearing what, um, everybody has to say. So thank you.
Thank you. And I believe Sarah Bass, you had raised your hand.
Hi, I'm Sarah Bass Kenny. I'm from the Pelham, part of the region. Um, I. Also went through the regional schools and graduated a long time ago, um, and now have a kid in Pelham and one in the middle school. And so. First, I just wanted to recognize like the amazing work I have witnessed this year from all of the teachers we have had any contact with. The communication has been fantastic. While my kids have had a very hard time schooling from our painted room. It has nothing to do with the lack of effort and heart that all of the teachers have put in. So first, thank you so much for all of your hard work. It's it's just clear. And when it comes to my personal decision making about school committee things, um, I try to think of. First and foremost, our students and especially the ones that. Don't necessarily have a voice. As loud as some other. Others may. Um, and one of my favorite things about being from Pelham and its tiny little town is that. I know a lot of the teachers and since my kids have like literally gone through the whole thing, I know all the teachers there and I love that we have a relationship where we can have conversations. So. I am really. I don't know if excited is the right word, but happy we are all here having conversations together now. I feel like this is a great step forward. And so thank you for starting that. So. I think about our our students and our towns and how we can. Like Peter said, I think we have the best schools around. It's why it's why my mom moved us here a long time ago and it's why I decided to stay here with my own children. Um, and to, um, to keep that tradition of great schools going forward with great teachers and great programs. So. Thank you.
Dr. Morris, there are others who are on the grid that I cannot see. I'm just wondering if anyone else has raised their hand? No, okay.
I'll keep an eye out. Yes.
Thank you. One of the main reasons why I started with that prompt is because I've wanted the community and everyone to know that. When you are all making decisions, as I believe I heard from everyone here, that you're making it on behalf of whether it's communication. With stakeholders or input from stakeholders on behalf of students, on behalf of families, on behalf of educators, staff. When you're you're making decisions based on advocacy work on behalf of the same stakeholders and community members. And for some, I have twice permission statement. So what we committed to as an organization. Is how we've also looked to make decisions. And so I wanted that background to be understood before we move further. So the next, um, prompt that I have basically is just for, um, Ms. McGee. And Ms. McDonald. And with this, I'm just going to ask you both, um, at this point, we'll start with Ms. McDonald. But what is one assumption that's out there in the community right now that you would like to have dispelled? Like refute right now, one assumption.
I would have to go first. I I think. There's probably, if if I had more time, I probably could come up with with several frankly, but I I think the one that sticks in my mind and and sort of. Why I too am happy that we're here together this evening is that. Is that the school committee doesn't care. And we we don't hear that from everybody, um, by any means. But I I think, you know, that's one that sort of really actually hurts when 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 we do hear that, I think, and, you know, probably. Not always visible to see that, but I I I think, you know, by listening to. Um, and actually, I'm learning a lot listening to all of, not just all of you, um, from APEA, but also the the school committee too, because we we don't usually talk this way. But that we that we don't care about, um, about the the educators, that we don't care about families, you know, every, I I think it's not any one audience that would would say that. And I think. You know, through through it all, I I know that for for myself as well as my my colleagues on the school committee that 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 just isn't the case. And I think. What we've heard and listening to all of all of you is that. It's it's just a year of tremendously difficult decisions that there is no great answer. That is that feels like we're caring for it for everybody as well as maybe the next person. And I think that's that's the one that's the the assumption. That I would most like to sort of dispel in in people's minds.
Thank you. Ms. McGee.
Thank you. I think one of the the bigger assumptions out there, I mean, there there are so many out there right now, but I think the one that's most disheartening. Uh, and challenging for educators is this assumption that, um, that we don't want to be in the school building with our children. It is. It's and I'm a special education teacher. And so a lot of what I do is about proximity, uh, uh, non-verbal. Views. Um, and sometimes just being there, the reality of it is I keep a lot of snacks in my room and sometimes it's really easy to get them to work if I can just give them a snack. And I can't do any of those things remotely. Uh, and so, uh. Trying to find a way to engage students and to continue the learning process while we're not in buildings. In a remote way is is extremely difficult for teachers. I I think we are certainly putting in a lot more hours and preparing our lessons and trying to figure out how to get students. Who just, uh, don't seem to engage and they're having difficulty with remote learning to get them to engage. And so I think it's really disheartening for, uh, for me anyway. As a teacher, uh, to to have this, um, this narrative out there that, you know. The reason why, um, we take the position that we take is. This idea that we don't want to be in the building with our students, which is just not the case. Uh, we want everyone to be healthy and safe. And we are doing our very best at remote learning and I hope that has been apparent. And how we have been communicating with families and the responses from students. As best that we can. Uh, we know that that all students are not engaging and we're fully aware that we have students that. Remote learning is certainly not ideal for, and it is ideal for us to be in the building with our students. And hopefully by opening up communications here, um, hopefully we have a lot more brain power here and we're working together. To maybe get to the point where. We can find a solution because as I've heard from you all and and certainly we've had this many, many, many discussions within our organization. There's no easy solution. But maybe by working together and 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 communicating more effectively and efficiently, um, maybe we can move toward that.
Thank you. So now I will open the opportunity for anyone else who is on this. In this meeting to be able to answer that same question about the assumptions that you would like to dispel. Any APA or school committee member can respond. Tiffany Tipica, you may go.
Sure. Um, I think the other thing that I'll will share is that, um, I think the assumption is that, um, the APA Executive Board is the. The the one or the the all-knowing, all-decision-making body. Um, but I think we want to just remind people that the APA. It's all Amherst Pelham Education and Educators and we make decisions together. And part of what makes it a messy process, or part of what makes it a time-consuming process, is that we work really hard to discuss together and. Come to a place where everyone can at least live with the decisions that were being made. And because of this democratic process and because it takes time to hear from everyone's voices, sometimes, um. The decision doesn't necessarily work in the in the favor that one individual may have because it is a collective body and we are making decisions, taking a lot of things into account and a lot of people's. Experiences and on the way it would impact our students and the way it impacts a variety of staff into account as we make our decisions.
Thank you. The floor is still open for any school committee member or any APA Executive Board member to speak.
I see, um, Mongla has her hand up.
Ms. Jagadeesh, please.
So I am really happy with what I'm hearing here today. And this feels like what I would like to see happen all the time. And the assumption that I think the community has and maybe even members here have is that school committee and APA. Are on different sides of something where we're all working for the students of our Amherst Public Schools and. I really would like the entire community and for all of us here to see that 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 we are on the same side here. And then moving forward, that's what's going to push us into being able to help our students.
Thank you. Do you see any other handle, Mr. Dunling?
Yeah, I I I'll go with two. Um, one, uh, one, one assumption to dispel is that the school committee doesn't value remote learning. I think, and Dr. Morris has talked about this before, is that, um. You know, when to talk about the urgent need to return to students in in buildings, it it can come with the. Perception that maybe we're saying there is no value to remote learning. And, you know, personally, I feel because of the way how it was thoughtfully designed and because of the dedication and efforts of our teachers, I feel like. We we have the best in class, uh, remote learning. I feel like we have the best design, the best implemented of anything I've seen. It's just that it's just the way I I feel about it. There's there's a, there's a ceiling to what remote learning can provide. And for some students, it's a pretty low ceiling. And so it's it's difficult to say to always put that caveat in whenever we're talking about the return to in person, but, um, I think that's one, I think another important. Procedural process question to dispel in case anybody is is watching is that. What this conversation is happening here tonight is is not, we're not talking about changing the MOA. That's like that. That's that's a negotiation process that can only start when both the school committee. And the AP Executive Board agree to negotiate the MOA and then there's a whole process. So. You know, it is, it it is good to hear the positive vibe here. And, you know, that that, you know, having open, honest communication can only do good. But this doesn't, you know, nothing that we're talking about here tonight is is about resolving differences in in the MOA. So it's 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 been a constant point of confusion. I think, uh, because it is kind of a technical process and and, you know, the public engages in at different levels, um, but it is something to note.
Thank you. Ms. Baker.
Yeah, actually, I realized I didn't introduce myself before, um, but I'm Karen Baker. I'm Vice President of APA. And, um, I've been teaching in, uh, I teach at Summit Academy and I've been teaching in Amherst since 2008. And I just wanted to, um. You know, I'm I'm also feeling really good about this and, um, the fact that we get to speak semi-face to face and. It feels like there's a lot of potential for opening up communication. I did just want to make one small point, which is that. It is not the APA Executive Board that will decide if we're going to or how, um, we would revisit the MOA. But rather, you know, it's a process that we go through with the membership. Um, and really the vote would come from the. The Rep Council or possibly from all members. Um, but we really follow the directive that we seek from. The body, the Representative Council and all members.
Thank you. Dr. Morris, once again, do you see any hands?
I don't think so. I think I saw a dog come into a screen, but I think that's the only thing that I saw, uh, come into a screen in the last last 10 seconds. So I think. Oh, I'm sorry. Nope. Mr. Harrington, uh, now has his hand up.
Okay, Mr. Harrington.
Yeah, so there's there's two. Strong misconceptions that I'd like to speak to. One that that involves strictly the school committee, the other that involves the the group where we come together as the APA and the the school committee. And so as far as the school committee is concerned, I I've seen this from. All walks of life, I'll say. It's been a broad misconception, but that that the school committee. Has been viewed some as as some sort of like ruling body that that exists in this ivory tower as if we are not part. Of the Amherst community, as if we are not part of the school community. And that's something that I personally take. I take umbrage with, you know, I forged through it all the time. I understand that, you know, first and foremost, I am a father, I'm a coach, I work in our schools, I work alongside you. I deal with some of you folks as kids at at different times and all. And so, you know, that that's tough. But then the the, I I think the, uh, the more difficult one, I think Mika and. Mr. Sullivan can can back me up on this is the the misconception misconception that this. that this group that, that, where we talk about safety, the, the Joint Labor Management Safety Committee, that, that we are some sort of a decision-making body that also exists. Actually, not even in, in an ivory tower, as I've heard it worded, that we, uh, sit behind closed doors making decisions. That, you know, that's, that's not, it's not what we do and it's not helpful to the work that we do either. I, I feel like it's been a hindrance at times to have to deal with that. I mean, I don't know if either of you want to refute any of that or if you agree, but that's kind of how I felt throughout this process.
I, I agree. And I think that the, uh, in a school committee meeting, um, that it was, there's some clarification around what JLMSC does. Um, however, you know, there are still, you know, some members of the community that somehow think that, that, um, there are powers that we have that, um, the JLMSC that we just don't have. We come together to discuss safety issues.
Thank you. Any other comments from either the APA Executive Board or the school committee? Okay, so what I'm going to say is that based on this response to this prompt, I've heard that one of the assumptions or some of the assumptions is that the school committee doesn't care. And that, um, teachers don't want students building or that the school committee doesn't value remote learning. Now combining that with the initial, uh, how we make decisions and knowing that most people didn't want to hear those two prompts, they came to, came up with this nonsense to how do we get students and staff back in buildings, right? And so with that being said, I know that, um, the next question that I would like to ask or the next prompt I'd like to put out there is, um, it says, what do you believe is needed for students and staff to safely return to buildings? So that being the main, um, description as to what the agenda item or what the purpose of this meeting was for, the question is out there now. And it is once again, what do you believe is needed for students and staff to safely return to buildings? We know and understand that the MOA needs to, um, be considered and reopen. And I'm not looking for that as a response, but I want the school committee and I want the APA to talk about what is needed. What do you in each of your roles believe is needed for students and staff to return to buildings? And with that, I believe it would be the APA, Mika.
Um, Tiffany will be taking that.
Sure. So, um, as Mika mentioned early on, um, when we, we first began this meeting, uh, we are meeting with our members on Monday, um, for a, our typical Rep Council meeting. And during that time, we will be, um, communicating the data that has come from our survey committee. And we will, as a Rep Council and perhaps as all members, be making a decision about next steps based on the findings that came out of that survey and based out of, um, a number of building meetings that we've had in trying to communicate um, with various staff members and, and understand, um, what our next steps need to be. With that said, we kind of envisioned this meeting here to be the first of a few communications to move us forward. And to that end, we're hoping to establish some regular meetings so that we can communicate between our different parties and have dialogue. And in the spirit of improving communication between us all, we are particularly, um, particularly based because this is such a pressing matter. We know that sometimes there's information and documentation that we all need to have so that we can begin to make decisions with our respective bodies. Um, so if there's a process that you, um, that we could agree upon for receiving documents and information that we can all use to help us make decisions, that would be great.
Next, Ms. McDonald?
So when I think of, um, so you asked us specifically not to mention the, the MOA. Um, but I, I do, rather than say, um, what with the existing MOA, I think just in general, um, we need, I think of the community, a school community. And I, and I, I use that word, um, really intentionally, not to mean sort of the school committee or the APA, but the full community. We, we need to be able to come together and understand that there's no one solution of getting kids back into buildings. It's going to be perceived as the one that I want or everybody wants. There, there isn't. And that's the unfortunate thing. Um, I mean, even in a regular world, in a regular scenario, no pandemic, um, there is, it's challenging to meet everybody's needs equally. Um, and we're always as a, as a school community and striving to do better at that. But I think when we're, when we're thinking about this is I would love for us to be looking for solutions or, you know, creative solutions that recognize that and are flexible to accommodate the different spectrum of needs in, in our school community. Um, particularly amongst students, so students that desperately need to be in buildings and students that desperately need to be at home. Um, and every variation in between. Um, and same with, with educators and staff. Um, how can we find a solution that acknowledges the differences in experiences and needs of all of us in the community and does much better than what we're doing right now to meet those needs? I don't have answers. I'm hoping that that's what, that's what comes out of sort of collective discussion. But I think that that's, um, I, I think the first step is that we're all able to sort of acknowledge that and recognize that and sort of not be, not, not make that become a barrier, but actually the framework and something that can empower us to come up with creative solutions.
The floor is open for any APA, uh, school committee member to speak. What do you believe they need? Um, Mr. Dumbey?
Yeah, did you call him? I didn't hear you. Okay. Yeah, um, so it's a pretty tricky question. How do you get students and staff safely back in the buildings if, if we can't talk about changing the MOA? That's kind of the elephant in the room. So, um, I mean, I'll be honest, it's hard to see. It's, it's hard to see, um, how students and staff get back in the buildings anytime soon. With, without addressing that, uh, because that's what determines the parameters, right? So, um, yeah, um, I, I, I think maybe one suggestion would be to articulate as specifically and practically as possible what the goal of these continued meetings would be if, if, if it's not related to the MOA at all. Right? Because I mean, I, I do like being able to see people face-to-face. I do think that, um, having open-ended discussion like this is positive, even if we don't come to a bulleted list of agreements and conclusions. I, I honestly do believe that. Um, and it feels good. You know, it's like I'm, I'm feeling the good vibe. I feel it and that, that's good. Um, but I also would not want to miss, um, I, I wouldn't want to set out on a well-intentioned collaborative effort that didn't practically lead to a specific place, right? And I wouldn't want to set expectations with the public that we are embarking on an, an, a new initiative that doesn't have a really well-defined conclusion. So that would be my one kind of con- concern about this, this continued format. Um, it's, it's not that I feel that it's good and positive. I just, I just think a little clarity around, um, you know, what does it mean practically and specifically as distinct from the other thing which is going on? Which is, do we or don't we talk about changing the MOA?
All right. So let me clarify some information. What was shared with me was that this first meeting was basically to give everyone an opportunity to talk, possibly build trust among the two groups. And therefore, there was no need to bring up the MOA. A point to be changed. That could be for further discussion or the next meeting. But this one is just to, um, introduce you to each other and talk about how we move forward from here, building that trust amongst you. Ms. Jag, would you like to speak? You're on mute.
You'd think I would know that after all these weeks and weeks of remote teaching. Oh, and I didn't introduce myself. Um, Dr. Cunningham called me Ms. Jag. I am, I teach second graders at Wildwood. And I am the APA Unit A Co-Chair, Elementary Chair. So I really like what Ms. McDonald said about creative solutions and teachers have creative solutions. That's what we're all about. That's what we spend every day doing with our students. So I do feel like there are many avenues that we could explore here. Um, and I want to start by just backing up a little bit with the, so the first part of the agenda was, um, was meeting the educational needs of our schoolchildren during a pandemic. And I see the first step in that, in us working together is to repair the relationship between APA and school committee. So that's what this meeting is the beginning of. And I don't think that we can get anywhere together without having that relationship be a good relationship. And, um, so to that end, I want to plead for respectful, honest communication. We, the APA are educators. We want to spend our energy teaching our students. And when we need to spend our energy responding to things that are being said in the press or responding to one-sided narratives, that takes away our energy from what we are really here to do, which is to educate the children of Amherst. And, um, so I guess what I would really need is to know that when we embark on this next step, that that is where we're headed with respectful communication, honest communication with each other and that the media or the community is not used in any way to try to direct or bully or, um, cause APA or school committee to move in certain directions. And we understand that the school committee is, that the community members are your constituents. Um, but having that play out in the press doesn't seem like it's a productive way to move forward. So I really hope that we can all leave this meeting being assured that everyone here, school committee, Executive Board of the APA, Rep Council of the APA and all the APA members are doing this work for the collective good of our collective children.
Thank you for sharing that. So I just want to revisit two of our norms. And it was to assume positive intention. So when everyone decided to stay in the call, they decided that, you know, we're going to assume that each entity here are here for positive reasons and on behalf of the kids or, and the community and all stakeholders. So thank you again for, um, for reminding us that that's why we are here. And also just that we're going to accept and expect non-closure, right? That we may think that today we should be talking about the MOA or we should touch the topic, but that's not why we're here. Once again, we're here to start to build that trust. And so that was the purpose of this meeting. Future meetings, when they occur, will hopefully start to open that conversation, right? But we have to build that foundation of trust that's not here yet before we can move forward as a group. Well, Kristen?
Hi, I'm, I'm Kristen Rhodes and I am the APA Secretary and I'm a special education teacher at Fort River in one of the district programs building blocks. And, um, I just wanted to say that one of the things I hope that we can do together is like Alice was saying, come up with this vision of what this could look like. Because I think we often go into jumping into something like the MOA, which is easy in other years when there's not a pandemic because we know what we're expecting it to look like. And we know what we need to do to provide what we need for our teachers and our students in that situation. And right now, as we're in a pandemic, we need to come up with what can this look like to get the best education for all of our students. We're all in agreement of that, but that's something we've never had before because we haven't been in a pandemic before. So as we jumped into an MOA with this big question mark of what is learning going to look like during a pandemic that can best reach our, all of our students in the way they need it reached, we need to think of that first and then work to our MOA and decide what we need to put into our MOA to do that. Instead of starting in an MOA, setting standards, um, to answer something where we don't know that answer yet. And so that's what I'm hoping the work of this group can do, to brainstorm what this is going to look like, what our students need. We know data's been being taken by our teachers and staff and by you all surveying, um, the community. And we know that parents are telling us what their families need. So now we need to implement plans that can meet those needs. And then we need to create the MOA that can protect our teachers and our students' safety based on this solutions that we have come up with for the problems that are in front of us. So that's what I'm hoping to do with this group.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna be perfectly honest in, in upfront that I'm trying to, to speak through. I, I wear a bunch of hats, you know, Dr. Morris is always quick to point that out, that I'm biting my tongue with one hat and I'm, and I'm going to speak and move forward with the other. But, but just to let you know that one is informing the other here. And so for all the work that we all here do that, that, that relies on like quantifiable data, right? I'm going to give you the craziest thing. What we need to step into our schools right now is faith. I don't mean blind faith. I mean informed faith, right? Like the faith that like, when I send my son to school to the Crocker Farm, that his teacher is going to give him the best that, that, that he can give him, right? Like that same exact kind of faith, but we all need to have that same faith in each other, right? Because real quick, speaking from my other side, I have a staff that, that doesn't feel like people have faith in them, right? And I know that a lot of you folks, a lot of our educators feel like there are people out there that don't have faith in them. There, there are, are parents who are losing faith daily, right? This is the point that we need to come together. We need to, clearly, we need to, to take steps to get to that point. But at some point, we are going to have to leap through those doors in order to get back into these classrooms, right? Like, it's not going to be perfect. Right? That, that doesn't mean that that shouldn't be our goal to try to get close to perfect, but we need to understand that we won't get there and we're going to have to take that leap of faith and actually just do it. But unfortunately, there's, there's no way to do that without us all doing that together and having that equal faith within each other. My two cents.
Thank you.
I don't know if you saw, I saw Carrie and then I saw Margaret, uh, as the next two in that order in terms of hand raised during.
Okay, thank you, Carrie.
Thanks. I just want to, I think, I really appreciate what, uh, Mr. Harrington just said. So I, I feel, it feels hard following that, but I'd like to, you know, second the idea of faith. But, you know, I, when you stated that question, I just quickly jotted down and a few things. The first one, I'm not going to lie, was we need a reduction in the spread of COVID. I mean, I think it's, it's hard to have this conversation without acknowledging that yesterday was the worst day ever in this country for the pandemic. So I, I want to put that out there. I don't think any of us are blind to that. The second word I put down was trust. And, and I'm not the first person to say that, but I wanted to, I didn't want to, you know, not, not state that. The other thing, you know, I, there are a lot of things that I think it's worth acknowledging that are beyond our control, that are influencing our ability to do these. And one of those is, is funding, not just from locally, but, you know, from the state, from the federal government. The other is what our governor and what our, um, other leaders are choosing to keep open instead of, you know, closing, like choices about, you know, do you keep gyms and in-person dining open? Um, and, and I think a lot of us would agree that it, it's really frustrating to be making these choices on this micro level when we're in an environment that I feel like is not prioritizing in-person learning. So, um, as much as I, I believe fully that, um, also what Ms. McDonald and others have said that there is a whole spectrum of needs in our community. And I think the, the thing that, um, there's not going to be, there's going to have to be some sort of tiered approach. We're not going to just open the doors and everybody's going to come in. But I think what I really would like to see is some flexibility is the other word that kind of came through. is some flexibility is the other word that kind of came through, some flexibility and thinking about how we can try to meet the needs of those most vulnerable students who are least able to access remote learning. And it's going to disappoint some folks who would like to be in person, but I think we have to acknowledge that there are things that are beyond the control of this committee and beyond the control of the APA and our and all of our staff that are influencing the environment we're in and making it really harder than it than it would have to be.
Thank you, Ms. Stanser.
Um, yes, um, so I really, I guess I want to pose a question. Ms. McDonald mentioned flexibility, Ms. Spitzer mentioned a spectrum of needs, and I'm wondering, can we think of things rather than thinking of what we had sort of specified before as we bring back this grade, we bring back that grade? Can we think more along the lines of what students need what? And an example I have is that I know someone who teaches and has said that the remote learning has gone really well for the most part. But there's a small number of students who just need help, you know, they can't do what they need to do without some help. So if you're thinking you know, is there a way to help that group of students in a different way with the same work that you might help the rest of the students in a class? You know, can we build in that flexibility and not be thinking so much about, let's bring back first and second grade, let's bring back sixth or seventh, 10th grade? I it's a question.
Thank you. The floor is still open for APEA or school committee. Ms. McGee?
Thank you for that, and I think that through this process that we will gather the answers to a lot of our questions that will that will inform us of how to best serve students.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. So going back to summarizing what I've heard in this almost hour that we've been communicating together, we talked about basically that you are making decisions based on information shared or communication and input from stakeholders, community stakeholders, students, families, community members, educators. And you're doing this, you understand that it's hard, but that you know that it's it's something that we have to prioritize. As mentioned also, it is also a mission, a part of the mission statement for the district that we prioritize the work with students. Also, some of the assumptions that you want people to move away from or would like to spell is that the school committee does not care and that teachers do not want to be in buildings, because that is basically what I'm hearing is that that is untrue. And finally, what I'm hearing too is that this being the start of a conversation to build trust between both of you, the school committee and the union, is that you would like us to be creative and flexible, and I like the way Ms. McDonald mentioned it, to accommodate the needs of all students and that we're looking to have informed faith and trust in each other and in the process so that we can move forward. So once again, this meeting was not supposed to bring closure. We were not supposed to leave this meeting with all the answers and a really plan as to what we're going to do. But what I'd like to leave this meeting with is next step. So I know that both of you will provide another opportunity to meet again, and in that conversation, the exec board has mentioned that they are going to have a meeting on Monday with their members to discuss survey results. So the possibility of bringing that information back to the school committee would be important. And also the establishment of regular meetings was something that everyone said would be, or that I heard would be a good start and continuation of building trust with everyone here. And let me see. Ms. Thibodeau mentioned that she'd like a process for receiving documents, maybe in a quicker manner so that information can be processed, shared, and left it upon quicker if if that's a possibility. So I want to thank both the school committee and the APEA for having this meeting, you know, coming together, having this meeting this evening, because like I said, it's a great and important start. And with that being said, my role has ended here, and I'm going to turn the meeting back over to Ms. McDonald.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. That was great. And we're right on time, too. So unless there's any further conversation with anybody, like any closing comments before we adjourn the regional school committee? Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I've had some no hits. I just wanted to appreciate Doreen because I felt like I was very nervous coming into this meeting with all of, with everybody. And I I just really want to applaud you for a fabulous job that you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds like that is a unanimous agreement with that one. So I will make a motion to adjourn the regional school committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald and second by Stanser, and there's no discussion. We'll roll call. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeker?
Seeker, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, nay.
And McDonald, aye. We are adjourned. Thank you again, everybody. Have a nice evening.